Okay, we're recording.
All right, thank you. So it looks like fall has fallen upon us. We've got a blustery day out there. It is four o'clock on September 23rd and I am calling this council meeting to order. If we happen to lose power, which is a high probability that could happen, Director Chambers, what would be the procedure for us?
So if we lose power for some reason and it ends the meeting, I will restart the meeting from my mobile device so that anyone who does have, still have power after that interruption, you can rejoin the meeting.
Okay, thank you. So we're going to begin with roll call. Councilman Jared Couch.
Here.
Councilmember Chuck Owen.
Here.
Councilmember Brenda Kinser.
Present.
Councilmember Joellen Kestie.
Here.
Councilmember Brendan McGoffin.
Here.
Councilmember Carl DeYoung.
Present.
And Councilmember Glenn Allen.
Here.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here. I am looking for an approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor, one quick question. There was one more item that we want to talk about tonight. I believe you know what that is.
Yes.
Should we add that to the agenda or should we talk about that in council member reports?
You know, actually, why don't we go ahead and add that to the agenda because I know that you're wanting to put, take that or have that placed before the planning commission. So.
If that's necessary, we weren't sure if that was necessary or not.
So. Let's. So when it comes to council reports, do you mind Councilman Kinser bringing that up and we can have discussion regarding that if necessary? You can bring that up.
I will.
You can talk about the meeting that you had with the parks, with the.
Yes.
Parks and Recreation and okay, let's do that then. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So then approval of the agenda.
Madam Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you. I'm sorry, who was that?
Councilman Couch, second.
Thank you, thank you. So I have a motion by Councilmember Kinser, seconded by Councilmember Couch. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, moving on to consent agenda items, one through three. Do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor, this is Councilmember DeYoung. I move the consent agenda.
Councilman McGoffin, second.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Councilmember DeYoung, seconded by Councilmember McGoffin. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So we're going to move right into staff reports. I'm going to begin with Fire Chief Dean Klinger.
Good afternoon, Council Mayor. Just want to let you know that the numbers continue to look promising. I'm keeping my fingers crossed, though. Looks like the school's going to be making some type of move here shortly. The other numbers that continue to look unpromising are the cost of the PPE are continuing to rise. But we're trying to stay ahead of that and shopping for deals when we can find it. I just also want to remind everybody, we are coming into flu season, so if you haven't had your shots yet, please think about it. And we're into the windy season, so make sure everything's tied down because we've been out quite a few times online so far today. That's it.
Thank you. Police Chief Tucker.
Lieutenant Dan McElrath here. I think I'm covering for Lynn today.
Well, excellent. Good evening, Mr., or I should say Lieutenant McElrath. Go ahead.
All right. Good afternoon, Council. Like I said, I'm filling in for Chief today and I don't know what he's updated with you guys. So I'm just going to kind of give you a brief staffing update with the police department. We're still a large process of getting our new hires through the academy. We have five currently in academy. Six to go October 6th. We still have something to work through. We got retirement coming up in probably December and of this year. And then a potential military deployment for a year on another officer, March of 2021. So we got those to account for. Other than that, it's been, the call load's been picking up. We've been pretty busy out there. It's just getting busier for some reason. I predict our calls for service this year to be over 8,000. Once again, and it was a little slower during the beginning portion of the COVID. And now it's just getting busier. And what we're running into a lot of times is we're dealing with a lot of mental health issues out there as well. And I just want to bring that up is Sket County has brought up embedded MHPs, mental health professionals riding with deputies. And that seems to be working very well. We've used them on several occasions already in the past two weeks. That's just started up. And so we have three mental health professionals riding with deputies. Anywhere from 12 to, you know, around 10 each day. So we've been utilizing that resource and attempting to contact these people with some problems that maybe show them some resources that they could use if it, if it works or not. At least we're giving them that opportunity. Mayor, I think that's all I have for now.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Director of Public Works, Mark Freiberger.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Main thing going on at our end right now, other than budget, is the project out on Highway 20 near Life Care. They're installing the guard posts on that today. They should finish that tomorrow. And as soon as we get a good dry day sometime the week of, first week of October, we're going to do the striping and that project will be pretty well finished. So that completes the last of our major projects for the year. And we're beginning to plan for the next season as we speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Director of Building and Permits, John Coleman.
Good afternoon, everyone. Well, we've been continuing to receive and process a large number of land use applications that, more than we typically get. Being, you know, conditional use permits, couple of variances and a whole bunch of long plats along with the subdivisions that we've been working on. And so just, just been busy on the project portion of the planning department. Planning Commission has finished their work on the 2020 docket. So I hope to have their findings to the city council at the next city council meeting. There wasn't time to get it to you today from the planning commission finished it on Tuesday. So that'll, that'll be a big agenda item starting the next council meeting. We've been also working on a long range update to the Shoreline Master Program. And we're submitting a grant application to the Department of Ecology for about $16,000. That is due next week. So got that just about wrapped up and ready to send off to the Department of Ecology. And that process will be not quite a year to get that Shoreline Master Program updated. That's our regulations for shoreline areas. That's due in June of next year. So that's going to be something that a planning department is going to be up to our ears in for the next nine months or so. And then, of course, later today, we're going to be having a conversation with council about a proposed annexation. I'll leave it at that.
Very good. Thank you, John. Director of IT, Bill Chambers.
We are still working on the planning for the exchange online migration. The firewall, new firewall is configured and ready to deploy. But I want to wait until after the Biased Cloud implementation is completed later this week before deploying that. Working with Jana on City Scene Magazine planning. And with Kevin out at Wastewater for the WIMS server. The components are starting to arrive for that, so we'll get that built and, and deployed. Biased Cloud, like I said, will be implemented this Friday and looking forward to that. And also just kind of wrapping up some CARES Act purchase documentation. The Council AV Phase One will be completed within a week. And Glenn has been working with getting estimates for securing all of our, our doors with key cards. So that's about it.
That's always a lot. Exciting news, actually, about the AV. That'll be nice when we can come back together and actually participate in a council meet, in a council meeting using that. Yeah.
We'll, we'll forget what it's like to be in the same room.
Well, all right. Thank you, Bill. Manager of Finance, Jill Scott.
Good afternoon. Thank you. Just a couple of items. As Bill mentioned, we are looking to convert our financial system to host it on Friday. So that is exciting. We are continuing to gather expenses for the CARES funding for the reimbursement. We are also starting to consider the possibility of having, having the option of phone payments. So when customers call in, they can actually go through our phone tree and just connect to an automated and/or live operator as opposed to pulling our finance staff away. So we're still looking at that. And just continuing to do a lot of budget work, just the various logistics helping departments. That's about it for, for now.
That's a lot. The automated phone pay sounds really great. Has there been complaints at all regarding the fact that we have been closed and people haven't been able to come in and pay?
You know, that's a good question. I haven't heard any from my staff. I'm sure for some of the customers, it's been frustrating. But nothing to note, I believe.
That's great. Thank you, Jill.
You're welcome.
City Attorney, Nikki Thompson.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm still doing a lot of behind the scenes work, assisting departments with reviewing contracts and agreements, reviewing ordinances, reviewing bid documents. Lately, I've been assisting quite a bit with some code enforcement matters, and so that's been a lot of fun. But other than that, my work is behind the scenes.
Thank you, Nikki. We appreciate everything you do.
Thank you.
And City Supervisor, Doug Merriman.
Thank you, Mayor. I've got a few different things. The first is budget progress. Jill mentioned that we're working away on the budget. The revenue side is pretty much complete. We have those numbers plugged in for two years during the biennial budget this time. Expenses right now, we're probably about 75% at having those input. Once everything's in, then comes the fun part of making sure everything balances. So we still have some work ahead of us, but I'm hoping by around the first of October here, we'll at least have something put together to share that kind of shows where we're at. And that'll help keep city council involved as we go along rather than just at the, the final stage of adopting the budget. So other items we have going on, human resources. We have a couple of different projects we need to be working on. One is an employee policy manual. We have a manual that's a little bit dated on that has how we handle different steps like hiring and benefits and different things like that. It needs to be updated to current standards. So we'll be working on that over this fall and probably around the turn of the new year. And hopefully have a new manual for adoption and have that ready to go. That'll take some work, particularly for Nikki and I to go through those different pieces of that and reviewing that with the mayor. So the third item I have is lodging tax. As many of you know, we have a grant program we do every year with using hotel motel tax. And the purpose of this kind of grant program is to encourage tourism within the city. So we can give out money with the city receipts in the form of hotel motel tax for events and things that will draw people to the city. A couple of months ago, city council approved us sending that out. So we have put out the request for applications and we closed that just yesterday, I believe. And we have a good number of applications that actually came in. So even with COVID and everything going on, people are still encouraged and looking forward to doing some events this next year. So we'll be convening the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. We call it the LTAC. And they'll be going through those applications because there's not a lot of money to go around. But they do a pretty good job at trying to be equitable and make sure everybody gets something to support their programs. So, and the last item I have to let you know about is every year when we talk about property taxes, there's a demon that comes up called the implicit price deflator. And this is the Consumer Price Index we have to use when we're talking about revenues and property taxes. And usually it comes in at 1% or more, not this year with COVID impacting different economic measures. The IPD is a little over 0.6. So what that means is when we talk about property taxes this year, we have a couple additional steps we need to do. And I'll be laying out all the details and everything in advance for you for that. But just know that'll be coming up here pretty soon and it'll require us to do two ordinances instead of one. So just a little procedural difference, but it's essentially the same thing. And that's the end of my report for today.
Excellent. Thank you, Doug. Moving on to council, council reports. Councilmember Couch.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a couple of quick things. I had a phone call from the auditor's office today. And they did a risk assessment questionnaire as part of our audit. And I got some good feedback from the auditor's office. They gave great kudos to, to Doug. And always said it's a pleasure to work with Doug and his staff. So did that. I also wanted to thank Brenda for holding a Parks Committee meeting and look forward to moving forward with some goals for our city there. And probably most importantly, I just want to throw this out to our police department and, and say thank you. This past Saturday, September 19th, was Thank a Police Officer Day. And I just, I probably get to see a little bit closer to what the job that they do and the, the challenges that they have with staffing and everything right now. And I just want them to know that we are very grateful for you and the work that you do. And Madam Mayor, that's all I have.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Councilmember Chuck Owen.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to give you a heads up that I will not be at the next work session. I'll be out of town that week. My wife and I are celebrating our 63rd anniversary. So hopefully, hopefully I'll be back for the, for the council meeting. One other thing is I just want to thank Mark for taking care of the problem on Central. People there are very happy. So thank you, Mark. That's all I have.
Congratulations, Chuck.
Thank you.
63 years. That's wonderful. Councilwoman Joellen Kestie.
I have nothing at this time. Thank you. But congratulations, Chuck.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Brenda Kinser.
Um, first thing I had a question, Madam Mayor. I did not get excused from the work session that we had this month that I missed. I'd like to ask if I might be able to be excused from that.
Yes, because you were actually working, correct?
Yes.
Yes. So would you be like to make a motion to excuse Councilwoman Kestie? Councilman DeYoung.
Councilmember DeYoung. I move to excuse Councilmember Kinser from the previous work session.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second. Councilmember Couch.
All right. We have a motion by Councilman, Councilman DeYoung, seconded by Councilman Couch. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign? That's great. Okay. There you go, Brenda.
Thank you. Thank you. Second question. Are we going to stay at the four o'clock meeting time? Or are we going to try to move it later eventually?
Right now, we're still staying at the four o'clock meeting time. We, there's some things, we're making some changes here. I've actually had conversation with Doug with some things I'd like to see happen. So we haven't made any permanent decision, but so far still the four o'clock meeting time.
Okay. Okay. And then I'd like to discuss the Parks Committee meeting that we had. Joellen, Jared and myself and many staff members were in attendance. And I believe there were some members of the public in attendance as well because it was a public meeting. On, one of the things we discussed was, or actually Nathan gave us a fantastic presentation of all the progress and everything going on with the parks within the city. And I hope everybody can take some time and watch that recording because the meeting was recorded and you can see it online. And there's really some great information in that video about everything going on with the Parks Department. And then another thing that we discussed is the property at 205 North Reed Street, which is a potential park over there. And we had extensive discussion about future use of the park and how the city has owned it since 2014. There's been a lot of discussion about additional uses for the property other than parks, like selling it for housing and so forth. But it has always been the desire of the council as well as the community around that area that that land still be used as a park. So what we, the conclusion we came to as a, as a Parks Committee is that we would like to bring it to the city council and have that land zoned immediately for parks. And also if there's a process that's going to take some time to do that, then we'd like to get a conditional use permit for that so that that field can be played on right now by children in the area before any actual parks development takes place there. So our recommendation to the council is that we proceed with asking that that be rezoned as parks, 205 North Reed Street.
So I'm going to throw this back to, thank you, Brenda. That was a great report, by the way. Very good. To John Coleman, our Director of Building and Permits. And John, because you head up the Public Commission, or yeah, can you tell us if that is something that we have to bring before them?
So to rezone that property, it needs to be included in the annual comprehensive plan update cycle. We're, the planning commission just finished the 2020 updates. So we, it would be no problem at all and easy to do to put it on the 2021 docket process. That process doesn't even really get kicked off until like March of 2021. And depending on what else is on that docket, it may take to the end of 2021 or sometimes even longer to get it done. But I don't see it being a problem. It's just process. And because that's the way the state requires rezones to be done as part of the comprehensive plan cycle. So it's, it's just a long process, but it shouldn't be a problem.
Was that already not in the comprehensive plan?
It's, it's been zoned as, the comprehensive plan, it's zoned as.
It's R7.
Presidential 7.
Is there a reason?
It is, it is also in the, I believe, I haven't looked at this. It, I can look up as I'm speaking. It is in the comprehensive plan, the parks element of the comprehensive plan. I believe it's mentioned there as potential future park. So it's kind of halfway in the, in the comprehensive plan.
Could I weigh in quickly? So I just took a quick look at your code and your zoning for R7, public uses or quasi-public uses.
Who's speaking, please?
This is.
This is, yeah.
Thank you.
Recreational facilities are conditional uses in R7. And so theoretically, you could pursue a conditional use permit for that. I don't know if your process allows for CUP while pursuing a zoning change, but that's something to think about.
So a conditional use permit also takes, you know, it takes a public hearing. It takes a couple of months to, to get completed once, just because of public notification periods and that kind of thing. So it, it doesn't move super fast. But if, you know, if, if the council wanted to get, you know, change the use, like implement a, a change of use where we put some facilities out there so people can use it more than we currently use it as. We could do a conditional use permit, get that done pretty quick comparatively to a rezone.
So the good news is, is that we could actually move forward. So this will be changing the zoning there. Will be placed on the comprehensive plan for 2021. The council can look at doing a conditional use through public hearings and determine what they want to do. So we can start moving forward with that process.
I have a question for you.
Okay.
Go ahead. Is that Councilman Couch?
It is. John, my question is, when was the, when were the final comprehensive plan updates for 2020 brought to the council?
Next council meeting. So it's future.
Right. So since it hasn't been done yet, why can't we start this, add this process for, for 2020 instead of prolonging? You know, because if it puts us toward the end of 2021 potentially, then we're looking at, we're losing a whole nother, you know, spring and summer of, you know, if there's any, you know, it's going to take more mowing and a little bit of prep by the staff. I guess, is there a reason that it can't be done in the 2020 plan? The council hasn't seen that yet?
So the, the council adopted their, their proposed 2020 updates for, to be looked at back in March. We ask that applicants, that private property owners that want to have a rezone done, they have to have their applications in by January of the year going ahead. So it's really just a question of optics. The council certainly can change what they, you know, what they've approved to be on the, on the 2020 docket. It just, I'm not, would the council do so if somebody came in with a rezone? Private landlord wanted a rezone, put on the 2020 docket, would we stop everything and put it backwards? So it's entirely doable. Just.
Right. I guess I don't agree with your, the comparison there because there's been extensive conversations in public meeting of this body about that being a park. And then when we talked about it at the last city council meeting, we were kind of left with the impression from you that it was a relatively quick process. I mean, if we need to go through the, the conditional use process, that would be fine. It just seems to create more work for the city staff that have to take the paperwork through that process.
That's absolutely true.
So I guess I would, that's the only reason I was asking if, if it was truly too late to get it done in 2020 is from a staff work perspective. Because I think unless something's drastically changed with council, that, you know, we would move in that direction. that, you know, we would move in that direction. I just, I, we can get there both ways, it's just how much more extra work do we want to make for the staff?
Yeah, so it could, it could technically still be put on the 2020 docket. That's certainly the council's prerogative. I would have to bring something to the next council meeting officially, putting into paper that it has changed. Or maybe Nikki, I don't know if a motion at today's meeting would count, but maybe we could do it that way too.
I guess Nikki, do you have a recommendation to the council with whether the process be to put it in the 2020 plan or go the conditional use permit process?
So in reviewing your code, it doesn't seem like you have a lot of detail put into how the Planning Commission processes the annual updates to the comp plan and the like. So I think it's a, it's council's call on how they want to proceed. And if you do want to proceed with adding it to the 2020 docket, I don't see anything wrong with a motion directing or asking that staff add that particular item to the 2020 docket and then bring it forward with the rest of the docket. Typically, your Planning Commission is your body that reviews those things and then makes recommend, you know, vets them and makes recommendations to council. So it's somewhat out of the norm, but it's certainly not unheard of. Councils oftentimes take the initiative and request that items be placed on the docket.
So it sounds like it's a, it's council's pleasure, what would you like to do?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Couch?
I would like to make a motion that the property at 205 North Reed Street be added to the 2020 comprehensive plan for rezoning.
All right, so I have a motion by Councilmember Couch, seconded by Councilmember Kinzer, to take the Reed Street property and add the rezoning to the comprehensive docket. And any discussion? All in favor?
Madam Mayor?
One moment here, Councilwoman Kinzer, did you have a?
Should we add the, the conditional use permit onto that as well? Or would that be a second, a different item?
Oh, that's a good question, so Nikki, would that?
No need for a conditional use permit if it's rezoned as public.
So going into the docket, we'll approve it at the next council meeting, correct? Or would it be the following?
Well, now, now, what I said about bringing the 2020 docket to the council at the next meeting is, I need to pull that back, because if the council does add the rezone to the 2020 docket, what I would do is bring it to the Planning Commission at the next meeting. And then they would review it and potentially make a recommendation at that next meeting, which would be October. The date of that is actually October 20th. So I could then, you know, presuming they make a recommendation on that date, the soonest I could have it to the City Council for review would be the November, the first council meeting in November for its first review.
Okay, so you can bring it to us at the work session? You could bring it to, bring it to us?
I was thinking the first regular council meeting.
Okay. That would be the 11th, it'd be the 11th.
Kind to get it there for the, for that first work session in November, but you know, we'll see, maybe, maybe that's possible.
Well, but hopefully by the 11th, which is the second meeting in November. Okay, so just so everybody knows, okay. So, and no conditional use then is necessary? We can just move forward with the motion to add this to the docket, correct?
Right, the conditional use permit would have been for using it as a park before it's zoned for public use. But if we get it, if we can get the rezone done in the next couple of months, then we should be ahead of the ability of the park to be used as a park.
Okay. All right, so.
Madam Mayor, Councilman, if, you know, my opinion on this, if protocol is, should go through the Planning Commission first, why don't we follow protocol? We can have the answer in November. But I think, you know, I don't want to step on toes of the Planning Commission or how things were normally done, that's all I have to say.
Yeah, thank you, Councilman Allen. And actually, that's what we are gonna do, John's gonna take it before the Planning Commission. What I am looking for now, and I have a motion by, I believe it was Couch and seconded by Kinzer, to put it on the 2020 docket, so.
Madam Mayor, my hands up and the participants, what's the protocol for acknowledgement?
For acknowledgement, I'm just looking for a mo-
For participation in the conversation here. Should we just jump in or just raise our hand on screen? Or would you like us to use the participant function of raising our hands?
I don't, honestly, Councilman DeYoung, I don't have that up here on my screen, so.
Oh, okay, so just jump in?
Go ahead, yes.
Awesome, I just don't want to step on anyone's toes there, so. So I have a question about when is the last time, John, that the council took this fast track on an item to put on the docket?
Probably about two or three years ago. We did something similar when we purchased the, the property across the street from the fire station.
Oh, right.
And the petition was already in process, so.
Right, and there was some urgency with that, because the property was up for sale. It was located, and it was something that we could use right away for the fire department. And that was the sense of urgency there. So to be candid, I'm a little more deliberative about this process, because it wasn't on the agenda, and therefore I wasn't able to go through a deliberative process to understand that we were going to be discussing this. And I would like to have some context. Originally, it was R7 for some Habitat for Humanity project, or another, someone coming in for affordable housing that had a parks element involved. And I do understand the concept of the community come together with petition, saying that they were opposed to density in that neighborhood and looking for more open space for parks. Because in, in that ward, if you were to do a kind of a park survey, it is lacking. We all agree with that. I do think there needs to be a discussion in our strategic plan of what we're doing for equitable, equitable parks and open space and equitable housing in the sense of affordable housing. And a little, I need a little more deliberation on that. And that's where I'm at, and I'm hoping the Planning Commission will take that into consideration and give us a report. I do think it is something that we are fast-tracking that just came about here without being in the publicly provided agenda. So those are my comments, I thank you for listening.
All right. Councilman DeYoung, is it, it, does it not maybe meet what you think would be adequate to take it before the Planning Commission? Because I do believe that's what Director Coleman is planning on doing, is taking it before the Planning Commission, before it be added to the, to the, to the comprehensive plan.
I understand what we've been talking about the past 10 minutes or so on, on this. My, my reservations are how is, it's placed without public notice on a written agenda. I appreciate that it does come up, and it is something that we should discuss. I think it should be more deliberative, and I do agree that it should go before the Planning Commission there. And I do understand that we are asking them to take on some extra work for it to be considered this year instead of the process that they may have felt for next year. So I just want, I want, I want folks to know that, that it should be a deliberative process and that we are looking for that information of equitable housing, affordable housing, and park space. That's a worthy conversation to have, thank you.
So just one quick comment, I do recall that when we were looking at this property and we were looking to sell it to Habitat, I think it was quite clear by the community, especially people in Ward 2, that they wanted that property to be a park. And so the council did speak at that point, and they said that they did not want to sell the land and that their intention was hopefully someday that it would be a park. That's how I recall that, but if I'm in-
I participated in that vote as well, and the minutes would reflect my feelings on that as well. And I am aware of the petition that went around. And I do, I do support the, the views of the community. I believe that a petition represents a section of the community, might not review the full ward survey, and that might be something to look at. Or again, as our deliberation as a City Council is for the whole city and how that looks. So again, I'm not speaking against a park there. I just would like more methodology, more deliberation, and something in writing about what we're going to do for that equitable park space that was originally, you know, a few years ago, and I understand things change. You know, that the park space that was going to be built into a development there is no longer. I'm getting some head shakes there, I'm sorry Joel. So it's, it's just something I, I just want to be a little more deliberative about. I'm not trying to stop the project, I just would like it to go through the process of the Planning Commission, which is what we're doing here, but I would like the Planning Commission to know that we need to have that discussion of equitable housing and open space, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman DeYoung, for your comments. I think they're valid comments and something to consider. I do have a motion on the table right now. Are there any, is there any other discussion before we move forward with a vote? Okay, hearing then, I had a motion by Councilman Couch, it was seconded by Councilwoman Kinzer, to place the zoning of the Reed Street property on the Planning Commission's docket, which is in October, they'll be discussing it in October. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And those opposed, same sign? Okay, motion carries, so all right, good discussion, thank you, Councilwoman Kinzer for bringing that forward and talking about the, the meeting. It was a very good meeting, and thank you John for your input, it was good input. Thank you also, Councilman DeYoung, for bringing to our attention the need to meet our comprehensive plan, which is actually affordable housing. So it is something that does need to be considered, thank you. All right, so Councilwoman Kinzer, is there anything else that you had in your report tonight?
No, I think that was plenty, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to Councilman McGoffin.
Hi, thank you Madam Mayor. I'd just like to thank everybody that participated in the Pat's Playground fundraiser. We raised up to $46,000 that was matched up today. So I really want to thank the community, I think that's gonna be an amazing part for everybody and a good memorable one for Pat, that's all I have.
Yeah, you're talking about the Rotary auction where people, is that what you're, because there was a lot of money that was raised at the Rotary auction for Pat's Playground?
Yes.
All right.
And there was a, there was a separate one that went out on Facebook too, so.
Oh excellent, I did not know that, okay, thank you. All right, Councilman DeYoung?
Caught me drinking some fantastic municipal water there, it's so refreshing, thank you. Yeah, so it's, it's a blow-in down here in Ward 6, and we've got some limbs down on Alexander Township and down in the park. And I really want to thank the city crews for getting on that so quickly. And also, it's just great to see our street sweeper back in action, doing the arterials in secondary streets. And that was some comments that I was getting from some of the neighbors as well. Additionally, I did have a great conversation with John Coleman and about some code compliance, especially down on, on Marshall, where we had a fire several months ago. And we have some, the best I'm going to say is temporary shelters having been installed and how the neighbors are feeling about that. And I know Officer Carr has been down there several times for code enforcement and continue to work the process there. It's, it's difficult when you lose a home and having to work through the process of insurance and other, other, other things to get your life back in shape. And so, of course, for showing some compassion and patience, but also taking in the consideration of the community. And I've seen some folks poking at the drains, getting ready for the storm. And hopefully we'll continue to keep the lights on and the power on here in the city. So thank you Madam Mayor.
Thank you, and Councilman Allen?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I wasn't able to make it to the last Planning Commission meeting. We have had some medical appointment issues, overruns and stuff. So anyway, I would like to be excused if I need to be, it was for medical issues.
Are you talking, you said Planning Commission, I don't need to excuse you.
Was the last, I heard Brenda apologize, was that last week? There was a Planning Commission deal? Or was that just Planning Commission?
Are you talking about City Council meeting?
No, 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 it was a planning, I thought it was a joint Planning Commission council.
Oh, no, actually, and so I'm glad you brought that up, I was gonna put that in my report. The next meeting that we have, which is October 7th, that will be the Joint Planning.
Oh, okay, then, no mea culpa. Actually, if, if this is reports, I'd like to thank Jill and Doug on their financial report this time. I may be jumping the gun, but there's no hocus pocus, I like the graphs, the colors, and I think they did a great job.
All right, thank you. And I have just a few items. The first one is that we are looking, as you heard the discussion that I had with Councilman, Councilwoman Kinzer, we are talking about opening up the city, it'll be a soft opening. In other words, we won't have council meetings in the chamber or anything like that. We'll just be opening up the, the foyer where people could come in and actually pay bills. And so, yeah, we're not gonna, I am, I am looking at not opening it until October 19th. I want to see where this pandemic is gonna go, it's been very unpredictable. And with my meetings with the Skagit Health Department, there have been some ups and downs. And with, with students going back to school, there is that uncertainty of what's gonna happen. So we're looking to do a soft opening October 19th, that is the plan, we are working towards that. But that also could change, bear that in mind, that that also could change. The other thing that I want to bring up, bringing up the Health Department, is that Dr. Librin put out a statement today, I don't know if you saw it, but he is saying that he would ask people to refrain from doing door-to-door trick-or-treating. He encouraged people to do other things like get in the car with your family and go look at the decorations, or to go ahead and decorate the house. You can actually read more about that report by Dr. Librin on the Skagit County Public Health website. And I had talked about the Cedar Woolley Downtown Association. I was finally able to get ahold of Ian, he wrote a letter, it's in your packet. I hope you did have a chance to read that. It sounds like things are kind of on hold there. I did talk to a couple of the board members, they are still uncertain how they're gonna proceed. So I guess there'll be more information coming on that, and I'll continue to follow up and hopefully they'll continue to keep me informed as to what's going on. So this'll be the third year, the start of the third year, if they choose to move forward with that. Let's see, I guess the last thing that I want to mention is just, I got, I received an email from Colista Scott. She is the one who sends out every year reminders about the, well, from the 21st to the 27th is actually, what'd she call it, Diaper Awareness Week. So we have done proclamations on that, I didn't do a proclamation tonight, but I just wanted to make you all aware, make the public aware that, you know, donating diapers to things like Helping Hands Food Bank, to different shelters, that those things are really helpful and very important, because there's many families who really, they cannot afford to purchase diapers. So just to make you aware of that. We are gonna move on.
Madam Mayor, do you mind if I ask a question about the Downtown Association there?
Yes.
So, yeah, the Cedar Woolley Downtown Association, to be clear. So they were kind of the major driver, and we were, we were funding them with that. So they were kind of the major driver and we were, we were funding them with taxpayer dollars to help us with the Main Street application with the state. So I understand that wasn't successful, but we continue to work it. And it's something, as I understand, we're still trying to, trying to get that application going. So who are we delegating that task to if they've suspended operations at this time?
So it hasn't been delegated. There's only a couple of board members who are really actively involved. They are in discussion. They've actually, and I've had discussion with them. It's still an unknown. I wish I had more, I wish, I really wish I had more solid answers for you. I don't.
Understood. It's a work in process, but that would be my question. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I have one question to kind of dovetail on that. When would it be an appropriate time, and maybe Doug needs to answer this, to have a discussion about we had dedicated, you know, as Councilmember DeYoung commented, the funding to that committee? And if they are on hold or if their status is, I guess, relatively unknown? I think we probably have an obligation to review that and because it is public funding and I think we.
Yes, but we also, we also put together.
Meeting season?
Yeah. But we also put together, we have an agreement with them and we, that money is on hold for them until, I think, the end of this year. So if they haven't made any kind of movement towards that money, then if they come back in January or February and would like to use that money, then we would have to do a special ordinance. Is that correct, Doug? Or am I incorrect on that?
I believe, I'd have to pull, this is Doug, I would have to pull that agreement to see when the sunset date was on that. I believe it was the end of this year and we haven't given out any funding so far in 2020. But if we turn the corner on the year and council would like to consider something, we would have to do a new agreement. That the current agreement would expire at the end of this year.
Okay, thank you, Doug. Does that answer your question, Councilman Couch, or sort of?
It does.
All right, thank you. So, public comment. During this pandemic, we of course have closed public comment. Yet we still are providing, if you want to provide written questions or comments, you can email them or send them by letter to City Hall and we'll be more than happy to read them into the into the minutes as well as get them out to all the council members. We're going to move right into a public hearing. This public hearing is actually for our budget, part of our budget process. So what time is it? I have 4:53 and so I'm going to open up the public hearing for the purpose of discussing the projected 2021, 2022 budget revenues, including the estimated beginning fund balance. And I don't know, I, I only have a few people up here in front of me, but I don't know if we have anybody with, from the public who would like to make a comment. Bill, do we have anybody? Do we have anybody who might?
I see a couple of members of the public, but no hands raised.
Okay. Give them just a second to figure that out in case maybe two.
Would we like to go over how they would raise their hands? Maybe a little process tutorial?
And all of them can unmute themselves as well. And, and just ask to speak.
So, members of the public, would any of you care to make a public comment regarding the public hearing comment? Regarding our budget? Okay, hearing none. It is 4:54, so I'm going to close public hearing regarding the 2021, 2022 budget revenues. And Doug, I know you have a fantastic PowerPoint you're going to take us through, so I'm going to turn it over to you.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and Council, and I'm going to turn to our esteemed bill chambers to see if you can put my slides up on the screen. So this will be a little new, trying to do a slide presentation like this on Zoom. So it'd be kind of interesting.
Did I get the right section, Doug?
I think you went past it just a little bit, Bill.
Okay, just a minute.
It's the agenda item before that. We're getting warm.
Okay, sorry about that.
No problem. Okay, tonight is, we do the first three required public hearings for budget. And Bill already scrolled too, so you can see my jokes already. So those are, are dead now. Thank you. But we'll go ahead and go through these slides. The purpose of this first public hearing is to talk about revenues. Later on, we'll do things such as property tax and then have a third public hearing to adopt our budget. But for tonight, the focus of the topic is on revenues. So Bill, go ahead to the next slide. So I have some bullet points. I just talked this through a little bit. We do revenue projections to begin the budget process tonight. Then in October, the mayor and I will be going through the departmental request with putting together a preliminary budget by about the end of the month. The second public hearing, we're looking at October 28th and we'll be sharing that preliminary budget with city council as well. And then if we can stay on track with our schedule, our third and final public hearing will be on November 12th. We'll be showing an ordinance at that time as far as what will be adopting or proposed to be adopting. And then our final read and adoption is scheduled to be on November 24th. So that keeps us in, in line with the state statutes as far as our schedule. Go ahead to the next slide. Right now, as I mentioned a little bit earlier, our revenue projections have been in process. We'll be adjusting those a little bit. The first thing we do is find out our revenues, so we know what we have to work with. And then we start working with the departments on the expenditure requests. And we'll have some different things, like if there's any financing required or operating transfers. Right now, Public Works, Mark has been working on his project list and getting those into us. And so we're looking at grant funding and different things there. Also, we're looking at any updates from the state on shared revenues. Many times, things like Public Works trust fund loans and things that we look at for financing. The state has other ideas on what they would like to do and sometimes that will impact what we're looking at. So we may adjust some of our projections as our business activities are known and confirmed. But the goal there is to get the budget balanced here as soon as we can. It's a little bit different this year because we are doing it for two years, but we seem to be rolling right with it. And everybody's been doing a really good job at adjusting to that. Next slide. So really, some of the drivers, I always like to talk about are what things are going on in our economy. And 2020 by far is the nail-biter year. Everything is so up in the air and different this year. Just for a couple of examples, we have what's called the CPIU. And that's the Consumer Price Index for Urban Wage earners, I believe it is, is what the U stands for. In January, if you looked at it, it was 2.5%, which shows economic growth. In June, it was 0.9%. And this is when COVID kicked in and started really changing things. August, things had recovered a little bit. It was around 1.6%. So it's, I don't think I've ever seen a year when it's bounced around that much. So it just puts some uncertainty a little bit into what our revenues and what the economy is doing. In a minute, we'll talk about the yield curve and it's doing what's called an upward slope. And we talked about this last year, for those that might have remembered, about what the yield curve can tell us when we're doing the budget. A couple of other things, negative gross domestic product, 37% decline in quarter two. That's showing the economy took a nosedive and that's no surprise, being we saw the stock market reflect a similar drop. And it's come back since that time. So it'll be interesting to see what quarter three shows us. Other factors is COVID-19 is still with us. It's an election year and we have a lot of political unrest just on different topics. So it's a pretty crazy year and it makes it a little fun on trying to guess where our darts are going to land with the budget. Next slide. So this is the yield curve I talked about. Yield curve, a lot of times, if you go to the bank and you say, I want a CD. What's the interest rate at one year? And they may tell you it's 1.5%. And they may encourage you, how about if you do it for two years or three years and the interest rate is a little bit higher? So basically what you see is the farther out you go, the higher the interest rate gets. And that's what this curve shows. When you look to the left, that's shorter term and the interest rates are lower. And as you go out over time, the interest rate typically will go up. That's a pretty classic yield curve. Next slide. Thanks, Bill. And this shows, for example, how you read this at five years, going along the bottom, interest rates are just under 2 and 1/4%. That's how a yield curve works. Next slide. So the red line, hopefully everybody can see these on their screens, okay? The red line is what we were looking at last year and that was called an inverted yield curve. You can see it actually goes down as you go out over time and that's not a good thing. When they have these inverted yield curves, a lot of times that's a warning that you have a recession coming. And when we were looking at this last year, that was a lot of our conversation. We didn't even know that COVID was going to be on the radar. So everything is off now. Everything's completely different. But what's important is the yield curve today is looking like the green slope. I actually stole that off the federal site that puts this out. So that's a good thing. When it is in a positive upwards slope like that, it's predictor that things are going to be recovering. It's not a fact or true science, but it's a pretty good rule of thumb to follow. Next slide. Okay, and the next one. Okay, so for a few slides here, real quick, I'll just go over what we're seeing this year. So this is the general fund. And when I put this report out, you'll see a graph on the right and it just shows how we're tracking. You'll see a thick black line. That's what we're actually doing. And that green shaded area with that thin line, that's what our budget is hoping we'll do. So right now, we're tracking a little bit below budget. A rule of thumb, when you get to the end of August, you're 2/3 of the way through the year, which is 66%. So roughly, we should be about at 66% of budget. Right now, we're running about just under 62%. I'm actually kind of happy with that because things weren't looking too good a couple of months ago. So we're tracking along at least pretty fine. So there's a couple of items though of revenues I just want to point out real quick. So next slide. So the first is sales tax revenue. This is the one we had the most concern about. Currently, we're at 64% of our annual budget. Rule of thumb, we should be around 66%. So we're running along fine, but a couple of things to be aware of. We've had a shift from brick and mortar stores. There hasn't been a lot because the stores have been closed to online purchasing. And what that does, people aren't going other places. So say like people live in Cedar Woolley might go to the mall or to go over to Burlington shop. Burlington gets that sales tax. In this situation, people aren't going there. They're doing online purchasing. Online purchasing goes where they're making the purchase from. So what used to go to Burlington is now coming to Cedar Woolley and we're getting that sales tax for those online purchases. So there's a little bit of a shift there, which is nice. It's kind of offsetting some of that brick and mortar store decline that we've had. We have some significant construction projects. They're giving us some one-time sales tax and that's filling the gap. An example is the library. And one of the things that I think I'm starting to see and hear about is we're calling it secondary COVID impacts. And that's the supply chain. This is where people get goods and things that they're selling in the stores. And that supply chain is getting kind of tight. Stores are open now, but the cost of inventory are going up. Or it's hard to get things, like we heard Dean talk about our PP&amp;E being on back order or the prices are going up. One example I've seen are lumber prices. Right now, we're looking at construction and development. Lumber prices, for a while, timber harvest was closed down, plus we had the Canadian borders closed. So a lot of that, it's putting supply and demand at play there, where lumber prices are going up pretty fast. We're seeing 25 to 35% increase in lumber package prices right now. So that's just one example of some of the secondary impacts that we're seeing right now. And that does affect sales tax. So next slide. Okay, business and utility tax. This one's looking pretty good. We're at 73%. This one's a little bit different because a lot of this comes in in quarterly payments. If you look at the graph, you can see some stairs on it. That's because we get a payment on a quarter. We wait a couple of months, another payment comes in. That's those stairs you see. And a lot of times, those payments come in in January for the fourth quarter of last year and then every three months. So by the time you get to August, we have three of our four months already. So the one item that's a little different than that 66% is utility taxes. We should be about 75%. So that's kind of how that works. So it's a, looks like a really good number, but we have to realize too, it's kind of an expected number right now. Next slide. Permit revenue. This is the one that we see the most change in right now. Currently, we're at about 29% of what we had projected for the year. We have a lot of items in the pipeline right now that will generate fees. It's just a matter of timing. So as we talk about annexations or development projects and those types of things, hopefully they'll come along fine here. And I just lost my slides.
I don't see him either.
I don't know, Bill, if you can.
I got a notification, Bill, that you became the host and then the slides went away.
I know what it is. My VPN. I just need to restart that. Sorry.
No problem.
Just need to share my screen again. Sorry.
And believe me, I know financial things like this can be a little dry sometimes. So it's, thanks, everybody for hanging in. I know there's a lot of information here, but it's good stuff for you to know.
Okay, should be coming up now.
Okay, you're right on the right slide.
All right. I know if that happens again.
Okay. Okay. So anyway, I think we've just seen that downturn in development and those things coming in. The way it sounds, this may just be a deferral. We may see this coming in next year as we're going along. But we have to be aware that it will probably short our general fund. We're estimating by about $100,000 by the end of the year. So that's one to put a red flag on and keep an eye on that as we go forward. So go ahead, Bill, to the next slide. Okay, other revenue. This is kind of the last one of the general fund. We're currently at 56%. And other revenue is things like transfers from one fund to another. And this one is at 56%, but this is self-imposed because we have a transfer of money coming into the general fund from our real estate excise tax fund, or REIT is what we call it. And that money was to build the building across the street from the fire department. And we just have that on hold right now. So we haven't transferred that money in. So it's not like the city isn't getting money. So it's not like the city isn't getting money from the outside. That's just our own internal transfer being on hold. Till we see how the economy is doing and everything there. So go ahead to the next slide. Okay, so really what it comes down to is this slide. If you look at the slide on the left, that's our revenues. And see, we're down about 4.93%. And if you look at the expenditures on the right, we've been able to do some cuts and deferrals. We're down about 9.87%. So as long through this COVID time, we're able to keep revenues. A little bit below our down, excuse me, our expenditures a little bit lower than our revenue downturn. We're going to be okay. We'll come out okay by the end of the year. That's in the short term. What we have to look at is some of those things we're holding off, like the building across the street. Those are one time type expenditures. So we'll have to look and see how long that covers us. If this downturn were to last over a year. And getting the two years in that, we might have to have another discussion on how we offset that. So that's one thing to do. So go ahead to the next slide. Okay, a couple funds that are not the general fund. This is the parks fund. As you know, the parks fund gets quite a bit of rental income from campsites. And different leasing that it does in the fund. And those have been essentially shut down since COVID started. So on the graph there, you can see the expenditures are actually above the dark line, the revenues. So we're in a little bit of a downturn in the parks fund there because of that rental income is missing. That'll turn itself back around sometime when we can open things back and do that. But we're going to have to keep an eye on that because when the parks fund is short on money. The general fund is the fund that fills that gap. So even though the general fund doesn't have that dynamic going on, it's responsible. For the parks fund and we, you know, you end up having two funds having a constraint on them. So we'll be keeping an eye on that. Nathan's doing a good job of monitoring everything there. Next slide. Okay, so this is looking to our budget now. Next slide. Okay, so property taxes. This is just a five year look. It's three years of information. This is our property taxes and how we're doing. Now it looks like we got a pretty good trend line. That red line shows us if we're increasing or decreasing as we go to the right. And it shows a pretty good increase, but the thing we have to remember is we did proposition one this last year. So when you go from that second column, 2019 to 2020, you see a pretty good increase. And it's in that lower section. That's where the prop one money goes. So even though we have a pretty good increase in property taxes. We know we also had an increase in staffing in the police department that offsets that. So we have to be a little bit careful on thinking that that's all available income. Because it is committed for a specific purpose. Let's go ahead to the next slide.
Hey Doug, you are taking questions as we go or at the end?
Mayor, is that okay to do?
Absolutely, yes.
So if you want to go back one slide, please.
Okay.
Thank you. So just to be clear that the prop one. That was to our general fund here. In 2020, that's the jump from 2019 to 2020. Is that prop one money went to our general fund. I think you made mention that we had put that into the police. Budget.
That is.
Thank you. All right, thank you.
Yeah, and it's probably small to read on your screens, but there is a general fund line down there. And you'll see it go from about 602,000 to 1.12 million. And that's the prop one increase in the general fund. Okay, next slide. Okay, this is sales taxes. We talked about a little bit. Sales taxes are just pretty flat. This shows a trend line going down of about eight tenths of 1%. So we're, that's about as flat as you can get. So we've had different dynamics like construction and online sales and things doing there. So what we'll probably be doing going forward into the budget is keeping that flat for now. We don't want to get ahead of ourselves, but we sure hope there'll be some form of recovery. So next slide. Okay, utility taxes. This is one that's also showing an increase over time. We're actually doing about a 1.5% increase in utility taxes. Now we do have an increase in this one in 2020, I believe it was. We did pass some additional utility tax. And that was for the public workshops. And some different things there that we're doing. So the utility taxes, we went, I believe we were maybe around 8% or so, and we went to 9.5%. So that shows, you know, the last couple of years, you'll see a bump up there, but remember that's a little bit artificial, just like the prop one money. There is a purpose for that. So just need to be aware of that. Next slide. So this is all taxes. And as you can see, it's got an upward trend on that red line, which is really good. When I look at this and kind of factor out prop one and utility taxes. Our tax pool, as we call it, is going up about 1.172%. That includes utility tax and prop one. Next slide. So we had just a couple more here to go. These are building permits. You can see 19, 2019 was a good year, 2020, we had budgeted higher. But it's actually coming in lower. So I think for the budget, we're going to hold that down. Going into 21 and 22. And then if things pick up, I'll come back to city council with a budget amendment. And we can market more to what we see happening. I just don't want us to over budget a revenue and base our budget on that. And then we get a surprise and it doesn't happen. So next slide. And this one, we talked about a little bit. I'll go ahead and go to the next slide from this one. Okay, intergovernmental revenues. This is a squarely one as well. You can see there's some pretty big changes here. In 2019, we actually started getting money from Skagit County to pay for the ambulance system. They have a property tax levy they get, but they have assigned that to the different cities that picked up the ALS program. So you can see going from 2018 to 2019, we took a pretty good jump there. That's what most of that is. So when I try to look at intergovernmental revenues, these are revenues coming from the state or from the county. We want to try to get a good feel on what we're actually seeing without these one time strange things happening. So if we go to the next slide. I took out 2018 and restated this graph. So you can see a little bit what we're actually doing. We have a little bit of a downturn and that's just, that could just be a number of things. Remember some of those state shared revenues have their own source that they come from. And they could be turning down too. So it's kind of flat. So we're going to stay a little bit conservative on that and just keep that flat going into the next year or two.
Madam Mayor, may I ask Doug another question?
Councilman Young, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks. Hey Doug, so when is that ALS levy up?
I, we did 19, 20. I believe we've got two or three more years left on that.
Great, thanks so much.
Yeah, I'll double check and I can send you a note back on that one. Okay, next slide. Charges for services. Okay, so we have ways of paying for things we do. We do get taxes that goes into the general fund and pays for things. And it's appropriate sometimes for us to charge for services. To users to kind of offset their direct cost to us as a city organization, as a business. So that's what charges for services are. Things like examples are ambulance transport revenues. We have charges for transporting. We do work with Fire District Eight. That's what FD eight means. We have an agreement where we do some fire protection services for them. Another good example are building fees. So we do see a pretty good upturn in this. And this again is because of our ambulance fees coming in. They are being used to pay for our ambulance crew and our vehicles and things like that. But it does show in 2019, a pretty significant bump. And that's what that is from Skagit County. Next slide. And this is fines, interest and non-revenues. It's a small piece, but it's important just as well. These are going down some. There's not any rhyme or reason to these. Sometimes. One of them is interest rates where a year ago, we were above 2% on our investment earnings. We're getting down to about the 0.8% now. So we're going to be budgeting a little, quite a bit less, actually about a third of our investment revenue. And that is one of the drivers that brings this down. Next slide. Okay, and overhead allocation to some departments pay the general fund. Instead of having an accountant in every utility and everything like that. We allocate some of those overhead costs to the different funds for providing those services. And it runs about 2% to 3% a year. Next slide. So this is your general fund overall. You can see we've jumped up since 2018. And we've talked about why we have utility taxes. We have the ambulance levy money we get. Those are the main things there. For the most part, we're staying pretty flat across the top of that revenue line. So next slide. And I just kind of show the same information there. When you do the trend on that, there's a little. Formula you can see up in the corner there. It's called a Y intercept formula and it tells you what the growth rate is. And that number is showing a 1.89% growth rate for our revenues. Next slide. So that was pretty much the general fund and parks and those governmental type funds. These others, I don't have a bunch of slides for, so I'll just touch on them quickly. All our enterprise funds, which is sewer, solid waste and storm drain. 2020, we're on target and everything there, there hasn't been really a downturn. We watched delinquency rates and things like that, but there hasn't been a significant problem. So where we're working on those right now is a list of projects. As I mentioned. I talked with Mark today and I know his crew, they've been putting together what their list of projects are for the next two years. We're working on those. And then sometime in October, we'll have a public hearing on utility rates. Just to get an update on where everything is. And we're still doing some continued planning of long-term projects. So that's pretty much where we're at with the enterprise funds right now. Next slide. So looking over the horizon. Let's just go back to quick things we talked about were sales tax trends, COVID and other impacts. We did lose our transportation benefit district money. And that's still up in the air. That still has to be resolved in the courts right now. So that might be a future discussion on what we do with that. We have to watch our trends and our development activity. We saw permit fee revenues being down. And then as always in Seidra Woolley is extraordinarily good at this is cultivating grant revenues if we have the match money available. So next slide. So this is a slide I always put up. It's the rabbit and hair slide. As you can see, the tortoise is running about 1.89%. And as we finish up the expenses, we're going to see what that percent growth is. And it's not always just balancing the budget, but all of us have to be aware of growth. So revenue is growing at 1%, 1.89. We have to try to keep those expenses as close to that number as we can. And that's the budget challenge we're always looking at. So we'll know in the next couple of weeks how that's starting to look. Next slide. And that's it. So that's our public hearing information on revenues for the current year. And for what we're looking at going the 2021 and 2022. So I can answer any questions. There's no action we need. This was just informational only. So. I'll turn it over to the mayor or any questions?
As always Doug, that's, it's, I appreciate so much the way that you go through and you explain what we are looking at. And especially when we're living kind of in precarious times and things that are uncertain. So you've got this calm voice that just lets us know it's going to be okay no matter what. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so moving on, just goals and objectives, looking at the goals and objectives. It's there for you. It's been rewritten as we heard you say it. All I need to know is if there are any questions or comments or changes that need to happen to that. We do places in the budget packet and so it is included in the vote when we bring that before you for approval. So any thoughts, concerns, or can we move on? Okay, hearing none, we will move on then to the proposed annexation. And I will turn this over to Director Coleman.
All right, I will see if I can simplify this packet for the council. I'm sorry if this was kind of a complicated. Presentation, so I'm hoping that I can. Explain it better in person to the council. So. The crux of this is. The Laura Hansen has submitted a notice of intent to begin an annexation. So this is part of the state required annexation process. So by doing so, we're required by the state process to. To hold a meeting to determine whether or not the city is willing to, for all intents and purposes, entertain. The idea of an annexation. Typically, when an annexation happens, the property owner is, properties that are. Involved in the annexation request are adjacent to the city. This is not exactly the case in this instance. So. The Hanson property is in the urban growth area. And if you look at the map in the memo. It should be very helpful to go walk through this process. There, the Hanson property is in the blue and it's about 42.75 acres. And you can see it's not quite adjacent to the city. There's the, there's 9.7 acres in between them and city limits. That is owned by the Mumford, by the Mumford family. So in order for the Hanson access, annexation to move forward. The Mumford property needs to be involved. It just so happens back in 2003, when Mr. And Mrs. Mumford did an annexation. Or not an annexation, excuse me, when they did a short plot, they were required to sign. An agreement stating that they'll waive their. They'll waive any protest to future annexation and that, and that annexation, and that agreement. Also stated that the city has the ability to sign on behalf of the Mumford. Any future annexation petition. So. The, the long and short of it is the area in red is shown is the area that was. The 2.127 acres that the short plot happened on. But that, the way the annexation, the way that short plot agreement and waiver of annexation protest is written. And Nikki can clarify if this is, if there's any question. The, that agreement actually applies to all of the property that the Mumford own, which is the entire 9.7 acres. Within the green. The green area. And. So if you, if you take the Mumford property and the Hanson property together. It's, you know, roughly 40, sorry, 53.5 or so acres. And it. It forms a somewhat logical annexation boundary. And the logical annexation boundary is something that we can talk about a little bit more. So what we have to do today is for the, for the state statutes. We're, we're to have a meeting to discuss whether or not the city council is interested in annexing this property. Because this property isn't exactly adjacent, but there is that agreement in place that the city can sign an annexation waiver. Or an annexation petition. We have the ability to. Annex the Hanson property by signing on behalf of the Mumfords. I, I've been in contact with Mr. Mumford and I don't really, Mr. And Mrs. Mumford, and I don't really like speaking for them. And I was hoping that they would be on the line. And I don't really like speaking for them, and I was hoping that they would be on the line today. Not sure if they're looking over the participants in our online. Not sure that I can see them on there or not. But I also want to give the annexation request folks a chance to speak. And that was Pat Hayden and Laura, Laura Hanson are on the line here also. If you have any questions for them. As far as the technical aspects of, you know, can the city annex this area? Anything is possible. There would, we would, at any time of development in this area, sewer would need to be brought up to, up probably either Birch Lane or Garden of Eden Road to provide a sewer to the area. And then roads would have to be improved. Primary access to any development on the Hanson property in the future would likely go up Garden of Eden Road. Cause right now Birch Lane is a narrow county road and doesn't, doesn't seem to have the ability to be a primary road. So if any future annexation, any future development on the Hanson property would also likely require improvements to Garden of Eden Road. But, you know, money can solve all of those problems. And we haven't got into all the details. Today, we're just trying to decide, is this even something that the city council is interested in going forward with? That brings me to the memo that I gave to the council. And there's, there's several questions on it, and I apologize that it's, there's so many questions involved. It is basically taken straight from the statutes in the RCW that says, should probably just read that to the council. And exactly what you're being asked today. So I'm going to read right now from RCW 35A 14120. And what it says is prior to circulation of a petition for annexation, the initiating parties, who shall be owners of not less than 10% in value, according to the assessed valuation for general taxation of the property for which annexation is shot, thought, shall notify the legislative body of the code city in writing of their intention to commence annexation proceeding. So that's where we're at right now. That's a very long-winded way of saying the property owner that's interested in annexation just needs to write a letter to the city and say, and have this meeting say, are you interested in annexing? That's something that needs to be done before they can actually submit any formal petition. So now we're at the step where the legislative body shall set a date no later than 60 days after the filing of the request for a meeting with the initiating parties to determine whether the code city will accept reject, geographically modify the proposed annexation, whether it shall require the simultaneous adoption of proposed zoning regulation. If such a proposal has been prepared and filed for the area to be annexed as provided in RCW 35A 1433040, whether it shall require the assumption of all or any of the portion of the existing city indebtedness by the area to be annexed. So what I did is I broke that down into the three questions in that very extra long-winded sentence. So I broke it down to make a motion to continue the process or so that that's the A, B, C, and D in, in the council agenda. Should the city accept reject or geographically modify the proposed annexation? And then I gave a proposed motion if you're interested. And then the next question is, you are interested in, in allowing the petition to at least be entertained. We would move on to questions.
So I have a question for you, John. I was kind of under the impression that what you were seeking tonight was just a yes or a no from the council as to whether or not they're interested in moving forward with the Hanson annexation. Am I, was I?
So that is, that is the first part, but by statute, there's some other things that, that leads to these three other questions. If the council determines the proposed annexation process may continue, should the city require simultaneous adoption of proposed zoning regulation? And that's an easy one. The, that, that just means, will it be zoned R5 as it shows on our, our zoning map? So that's not a difficult question. And then the other follow-up question is, if the council determines the proposed annexation may continue, should the city require the assumption of all or any portion of existing city indebtedness by the area to be annexed? And that means, do we tax it the same as all other parts of the city? And are they required to pay the same levies that the city has adopted, all of those sorts of things? And typically we do that. So those are the easy questions. Really, the question is, you're right. The, the question is, does the city want to go forward with this? To probably let the annexation petitioner have a chance to speak to, to explain why they're, they're interested or answer any questions you might have.
So I do know that Pat Hayden is on the line and you have your, you're representing Ms. Hanson, is that correct?
Yes. Ms. Hanson and I are here together and we'd be glad to make a statement or maybe add something to this if you wish, or answer questions. But just let us know how you want us to proceed.
Okay. All right. So, John, I guess I just, I honestly, I, I apologize. I'm confused because I was under the impression that we had decided right before council meetings began that tonight we were just gonna get direction from the council as to whether or not they wanted to move forward with annexation. Do you have to, is, is, is it a requirement that we have all these other questions answered prior to that? Or is that something that we can actually deal with in, in a later meeting?
So those, those other questions are, they are required by the state statute. As I write, you know, when we have this meeting to discuss whether or not we want to go, go ahead. And then you, the, those other questions follow through. And those are not the difficult questions. Really, the difficult question is, is, is the council interested in entertaining this, this petition, which would kick off the, the process of studying whether or not it's, whether or not, you know, the, everything can, the, the city utilities can be served to the area. What would need to be done to do so? That's when the, the hard work starts. This is really just, do we even entertain the petition from, from the annexation requesters?
Okay, so. So John, perhaps you, you could simplify it by saying the other questions are mere formalities that have to be answered at, at this meeting. They, they don't really, they're not, they only have one answer, really.
I agree with Nikki. The, the, the follow-up questions after, you know, whether or not the council is interested in, in allowing the petition to go forward, they are formalities. That's, that's an excellent way of stating it. And those, you don't need to be tripped up by those. It just needs to be stated in, in the minutes of the meeting as RCW requires.
Okay.
Madam Mayor.
Councilman McGoughan, yes?
Yes, I received an email from Rick Mumford this past, and I just want to make sure that since he's not on the meeting tonight, that his voice gets heard on this issue. Do you want me to send that to the council? I forwarded it to you, John and Doug. But I can send it out to the whole council or I can read it into the minutes for tonight. Which would you prefer?
Well, why don't you, we received it as well. We did receive it. He actually did not, he actually did not request that it be read into the minutes, but we can do that. John?
I can also just give a quick, brief overview of what he says.
Okay.
Whatever.
Go ahead. Yes, please. Thank you.
So he's not opposed to it. He gave some background. He just says, if the city chooses to have a buy-in for city services, that it'd be made at this time of development instead of at the time of annexation, so as to not create a financial hardship for the people. He also asked that if we choose to annex the property, that there'd be a no buy-in for city service.
Thank you, Councilman McGawson.
Madam Mayor, I saw Councilman DeYoung had his hand up, so I'll, I'll yield to him, but I do have a question or a statement to make.
Thank you, Jared. I, I appreciate that, Councilmember Couch, Council Mayor. I had a couple of questions. So I, I did not receive the Mumford email. I think that was to limited distribution. Thank you, Councilmember McGoffin for reading that. It's good information to have. So this, my, my biggest question is, how does this impact? And maybe Mark's still on the line here about the Jones John Liner connector there. Because it's really close to, to that. Also, there seems to be a couple of waterways in that Hanson area. And my question then is, if we do annex it, what is the permitting for it? Is it R5 or is it going to be R15? You know, if it's R15, it's, it's going to be about 640 units. And you know, those, I'm just kind of trying to find the boundaries. Thank you very much.
So I can answer the zoning question. And that's actually the answer to one of the follow-up formality questions is what is, what, that it would be zoned R5. That's what it's showing on our comprehensive zoning map. And that's what they're requesting to be in. So it would be, you know, five units per acre in this area.
And there's 42 acres, right?
Pardon me?
Forty-two acres?
The Hanson property is about 42.7 acres.
Right, times five, awesome.
And, you know, there would be, and then another 10 and there might be, yeah, so.
Under 300, awesome. Thank you.
Okay. And then Councilman Couch?
To be treated just as, you know, regular critical areas. So we have regulations.
So like some easements and some setbacks?
Yeah, if they're, if they're found to be, you know, depending on the type of waterway, then there are setbacks in our code from how far you need to stay away from those to develop.
And then my, my primary question then is, how does this affect the Jones John Liner project? If, you know, if, if we do it, if we don't do it. Thank you.
So this is Mark. Of course, this area is, is in our UGA and are planning for improvements to our infrastructure, which Jones and John Liner is major part of that, anticipates this area would develop. So it, it fits fine with that. Of course, tonight is just your action on whether to proceed or not. Once that's done, as John mentioned, there would have to be a full engineering study to determine the feasibility of extending utilities to the site from a, from a 20,000 foot level. We do have sanitary sewer in Jones Road that is stubbed to the county boundary on both Birch Lane and on Garden of Eden. So as John mentioned, that's the likely way those utilities would be extended. They are deep enough to serve, just again, looking at it from a broad perspective, they're deep enough to serve quite a ways up there and, and maybe the whole thing. But again, that's, that's subject to the engineering study.
I'm satisfied. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Couch, you had a question?
I did, and hopefully I can frame it into a question more than a statement. I, I am interested in, you know, taking this further. And I appreciate the detail that Ms. Hanson has brought to the council. The only, I guess, thought that I have is, it just seems to be an awkward conversation to be having without the Mumfords being involved. And I just, I don't know if Nikki can maybe legally clarify that signing of an agreement not to protest. Or, I mean, I, I'm good with that. Just the only thing that I guess puts me on shaky ground.
Sure, and I can weigh in on that. So these types of agreements, courts do uphold them. What you're getting in exchange for giving up a future right is oftentimes like utility service or some other benefit that you're getting at that time. And the courts have said that it is a legally binding agreement and that you can require people to annex at, at an appropriate time. I understand council's concerns and, and that it does create some, you know, some reluctance. But I think you also have to look at annexations from a Growth Management Act perspective. And what we're looking at there is how is the city going to grow? And can we ensure that it grows in a manner that makes sense and that consolidates services in an urban area? And grows it consistently and doesn't leave islands and pockets and strange things. Which is why I think another reason, other than ensuring that you're not providing services to parties outside of the city limits and not getting your debts and the like paid by those properties. But another reason for these types of agreements, I think, is honestly, so that you can annex them in a way that makes sense and bring them in, in a manner that's consistent with the Growth Management Act. That's probably more than you wanted, but that's my perspective.
That definitely helps. And I, Mayor, sorry, one follow-up question to Mark or John. We, it would, it would be appropriate the, to follow with Mumford's request that they wouldn't have to connect until time of sale or development on their property. Would that be correct?
So the way that's handled in our, our code is that once the utility is in and there is adjacent right away to their property, both need to be true to where they could be served by the utility. If they're within 200 feet, they would receive 180-day letter on completion of the utilities requesting that they, they hook up within another 180 days. So they actually have a year to do that. But we also have in our code a provision that if they have a working septic system, a documented working septic system, that they can take a waiver on the connection. So there, there, there's a vehicle to avoid an undue hardship on, on existing residences that are in a situation like this.
Great, thank you. I just would put out to the council that my, my questions have been answered. And I would have no problem moving forward in this because they've provided great detail.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for John or for Nikki? Okay, hearing none. John, if you are ready, let's move forward. I guess the first question would be, should the city accept a petition to annex several properties near city limits and require the city to sign petitions on behalf of six additional properties? Is that correct? Is that what you're looking for us to do?
I would actually recommend for all, to, to make a recommendation for all of the Mumford properties to be included. So that would be the, the, the second recommended motion there. There is an or. And that, that would be because it creates a much clearer line. And instead of, if you just include the six, it creates a very oddly shaped annexation area. And we're not being, we're not holding ourselves to this right now. We're just, we're just kind of putting out the, putting out the idea that this is what we're, we're intending to do as we go forward. But we're not like making a motion that, we're not signing a petition at this point.
No.
So I, I would recommend including all 9.7 acres of the Mumford property, which is for, you know, the all nine Mumford parcels, just for a cleaner line. And that's my.
And, and from Public Works' perspective, I totally agree with that. In fact, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be that warm on this if it didn't have the entire parcel included in this. Mayor, I just wanted to remind Mayor, I just wanted to remind you that Mr. Hayden and Ms. Hanson haven't actually spoken to this yet. If you wanted to give them the opportunity to say something about it.
Actually, I thought I did, but they were looking for direction. Is there comment that you would like to make, Mr. Hayden, or would Ms. Hanson like to make comment?
I think we'd both like to say something briefly. But the first point is, this is just the first step in this process. And there's an awful lot to determine if the city annexes this, because it's going to require urban-level infrastructure, which is expensive. And Ms. Hanson's goal is to develop this over a period of at least a decade, if not longer. So it isn't going to be something that's just put in at once. The city's going to have to help design and probably participate in some of the infrastructure. Ms. Hanson will have to participate in some of the infrastructure, and probably other people who choose to develop or annex will end up participating. None of that is on the table at this point. Those are just general things. The second thing is, in the past, the city has had some pretty half-assed annexation boundaries. The best example is the one to the south, which is a popsicle-stick-type annexation, where other lots are left out, and it doesn't allow for a logical development of city infrastructure. People have come to the council and basically obtained personal favors decades ago in terms of annexation and sewer line installation. Ms. Hanson is trying to avoid that in her process by doing something that's going to benefit everybody, doing it with the approval of the city, and looking at Growth Management Act requirements for annexation and concurrent development of infrastructure. So this is the development that you'd like to see. The other problem is that if you do deny it, her other choice is to develop it in five-acre lots as ranchettes, which would probably make future development impossible, and that is not her desire. But she could do very well with minimal infrastructure to develop, because she has enough land at county standards, which would be five-acre lots. That's not what she wants to do. So this is an opportunity to have a higher-quality development that looks at the broad picture of infrastructure. There's a million issues involving cost and design that we're not talking about, and you guys aren't either at this point. So this is just a general proposal. And I'm aware that your city professionals know what all of these issues are, and they know what her issues are going to be. There's, you know, this is on the table. But if you're going to give us a general approval, then we're going to meet with the city and talk about those issues, and try to find common ground. I'm going to turn this to Ms. Hanson, who may want to say something. You're on the screen now.
Well, unfortunately, you did it all, so I have nothing to add.
Accurately respect what you want to do.
Yes. I either work with the city, bring it in, and work with the city, and do the R5s, or I will end up breaking it up in five-acre tracts and doing it that, and I'd rather not do it that way.
And my other understanding is, you want to try to do a high-end residential development?
Yes.
Not a lot of houses?
Not a lot of houses. I'd like to do a 55 and over in a section. I would like to do it in small increments. I don't want to break it all up in a couple of years. I'm looking at a long-term plan. And the top will be the last to be developed.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm going to put this back on mute unless there are any questions, so.
Are there any questions for Ms. Hanson or for Mr. Hayden from the council? Okay, so are there any other questions or comments that the council has for either John or for Nikki? Thank you, Ms. Hanson and Mr. Hayden. Thank you. Okay, hearing none. I have, we've already heard from Mr. Couch. He says that he is interested in moving forward with this, and I'm just going to kind of go down the line, and you can just let me know, yes or no, if you're interested in, you know, kind of exploring the annexation of this property, as stated by John, where he is encouraging us to include all of the Mumford property. So Councilman Owen, what are your thoughts? Are you for the option to explore annexation or not? Okay, how about Councilwoman Kinzer?
I am for exploring annexation.
Okay. Councilwoman Kestie?
I too am for exploring into it. I like the plan laid out.
All right. Councilman McGoffin?
I think, Madam Mayor, I'm also for it. I just want to make sure that, like Councilman Couch said, that we include the Mumfords moving forward and respect their wishes as well.
Very good. Okay, thank you. Councilman Allen? And Councilman DeYoung?
I'm ready to consider a motion.
Okay. All right. So I guess, if you want to make that motion, I, do you need a, do you need a motion, John? Or having heard from the council members willing to move forward, are you good with that?
Yeah, I would like a motion.
Okay.
If we can go down the line, there's four different motions. The first one has an option of two. I recommend the second motion, including all nine Mumford parcels. And then we can move on and do the other motion, that one.
All right, so are you talking about 1, A, B, C, and D? Is that what you're looking at, John?
Yeah, so the motion, I believe, would be on page 67 of the packet.
I was looking at page 65. Okay, so does somebody want to make a motion, either looking at the first option or the second option? First option would be for only six parcels of the Mumford property. The second option would be all nine parcels of the Mumford property.
Madam Mayor, this is Councilman Couch. I make a motion to continue the proposed annexation process requested by Laura Hanson, and exercise the city's authority to sign an annexation petition for all nine Mumford properties, as authorized by the Agreement Regarding Annexation and ULID and LID waiver of protest for development within the urban growth area of the City of Cedar Woolley filed under Auditor File 200304240148.
All right, thank you. Is there a second?
Second, Councilman Owen.
All right. Any more discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed by the same sign? Okay, so we have accepted the second option, where we would move forward with the, exploring the annexation, including all nine parcels of the Mumfords, all nine parcels. So moving on then to the second question, to make a motion that the city require the stimulus adoption of proposed zoning regulations. Do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor, Councilman Couch, I make a motion that the city require the simultaneous adoption of proposed zoning regulation.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Okay, no.
Okay, so a motion by Councilman Couch, seconded by Councilman Owen, to make that motion, that the city requires simultaneous adoption of the proposed zoning regulations. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Third question, two, we're looking for a motion that the city require the assumption of all or any portion of existing city indebtedness by the area to be annexed.
Madam Mayor, Councilman McGoffin, I make a motion that the city require the assumption of all or of any portion of existing city indebtedness by the area to be annexed.
Is there a second?
Second, Councilman Owen.
Okay. Motion by Councilman McGoffin, seconded by Councilman Owen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same, same. All right, that motion carries. And the fourth and final is to, I'm looking for a motion to authorize the mayor to have the signatory power on any annexation petition for the parcels, subject to the Agreement Regarding Annexation and ULID/LID waiver of protest for development within the UGA of the City of Cedar Woolley filed under Auditor File 200304240148.
Madam Mayor, Councilman Couch, I make a motion to authorize the mayor to have signatory power on any annexation petition for the parcels, subject to the Agreement Regarding Annexation and ULID/LID waiver of protest for development within the urban growth area of the City of Cedar Woolley filed under Auditor File 200304240148.
Madam Mayor, Councilman Allen, I'll second that.
Okay. So we have a motion by Councilman Couch, seconded by Councilman Allen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same. Okay, it looks like that motion carries as well. So John, it looks like you have a lot of work ahead of you.
Yes, and I'd like to thank the council for their patience on this complicated issue. I really appreciate all the thought you put into it. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Madam Mayor.
Councilman DeYoung?
I see it's past the hour, and I would like to make a motion to extend the meeting.
All right, we have a motion by Councilman DeYoung to extend the meeting so that we may move into executive session to discuss the real estate, real estate under RCW for 2.30.1101B. Is there a second?
I second the motion to extend.
Okay, so I have a motion by Councilman DeYoung, seconded by Councilman Couch. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, so motion carries. So at this point, we are going to, we will be going into executive session to discuss the selection of a site or the acquisition of real estate by lease or by purchase when public knowledge regarding such consideration would cause a likelihood of increased price, stated by the same RCW that I stated in the motion. So for the public, we will be moving into discussion and out in 15 minutes. Okay.
Eric, point of order. Would it be appropriate to set the, give ourselves an extra five minutes just for transition time, and maybe say, or a couple extra minutes, because we ran against the clock in our last executive session? Is that appropriate?
I can do that. I don't have a problem with that. We, in fact, I'll set it for 25 minutes. How's that?
That's great, thanks.
We may be back before that. Okay, thank you. And Bill?
We actually have to stay out the entire time, and so perhaps it might make more sense to extend at the time, because if we don't go for 25 minutes, we have to stay out for 25.
So what do you suggest?
Are we coming back at 6:20? What's the time? Can we give people a time instead of?
What I have is now 6:04, and we will be back at 6:20. There we are.
Perfect.
All right, thank you.
Okay, are you ready to go into breakout room?
I think we are. Thanks, Bill.
Okay, so the members I have for the breakout room are Brenda, Brendan, Chuck, Glenn, Jared,
Madam Mayor, I think you're muted, but I had a question for Nikki.
Thank you. Yes, I am. Go ahead.
Nikki, just a clarification question. Would a motion need to be appropriate for the mayor to take further action?
No, not at all. We will bring that back at a later date.
So anyway, we are, it is 6:21, we are back from executive session and our next council meeting will be a work session. It'll be the joint council and the PC group. So if there is nothing more, we are adjourned.
Madam Mayor. Just to go to the order, I'd just like to wish Council on a happy anniversary and also a happy birthday. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. All right, thank you, everyone. Have a good night. We are adjourned.